... meeting. Recommend businesses adopt the policy on their own, but you know, wouldn't as a recommendation.
I'm good. You look lovely as always. Hey Garrett, how are you? We can't hear you. Nope, I can't hear you, but I can read your lips. Francis, can you hear Garrett?
No, I can't.
Okay. I was afraid to speak. Hey Ian.
Hi.
So did you get the bug you were after earlier?
No, there's a fruit fly in here somewhere terrorizing me and it gets...
Yeah, right in your eyeball.
In my personal space.
Garrett, it says you're unmuted. I'm not sure why we can't hear you.
Um, just for the record, I had to update my Zoom and then I had to rejoin. So I don't know if Garrett has to do that too?
Hmm.
I don't know.
More than that now.
It's about four o'clock, but Councilman Mullenax hasn't joined, is that correct, Ash?
Yes, I don't see him yet.
And are we able to get Garrett up or no? Not yet.
I guess we've lost Garrett. Well, Garrett's back and we can see him. How are you? Use your sign language.
Oh, that's hysterical.
How about now?
There you go.
Yes, we're good.
All right, how about that?
All right, well, I guess Troy, Troy will just have to join us when he gets here. So I call the special meeting of the Town of James Island Council in order. So the only item on our, on our agenda is a ordinance regarding face coverings. And I would like to move that we adopt the draft ordinance that I sent you earlier today. Is there a second? Hey, any discussion?
Um, just, just to be clear, this is Councilwoman Miniano. This is for indoors only, just for businesses. Is that correct?
I think that's a fair summary. It's, it's indoors and I believe it does apply to businesses. Yes. Any other questions or discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Milliken. Oh, I actually, I apologize. There are several things we are supposed to do, right? The first is the town clerk should call the roll. So.
Okay.
Francis, please.
Councilman Bowles.
Present.
Councilwoman Miniano.
Present.
Councilman Milliken.
Present.
Councilman Mullenax. And Mayor Woolsey.
I'm present. And, and then I will try to remember to say this is Mayor Woolsey and then please, we should identify ourselves before we speak. And Councilman Milliken had the floor.
Yes, thank you. Councilman Milliken, uh, the, I felt that the first draft that was submitted for this had some stronger language with respect to items one and two on page two. It changed to the Town of James Island recommends. I would like to see that struck and go back to the original stronger version where you must wear a face mask covering while inside the building or vehicle. Um, I just think that that's a little bit stronger and it doesn't send a mixed message of a recommendation versus something that we must do.
Any further discussion?
And that would go for one and two there. And you would get, you would go ahead and reaffirm must under number one and then strike should under two.
So is that a proposed amendment?
It is.
Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second for discussion because I want to be sure, this is Bowles speaking, sorry. I want to be sure we're all looking at the same document because the one that I had pulled up on my computer just says, "The use of a face covering or mask is required by every person within the boundaries of the Town of James Island is detailed below." And then it says must wear a face mask in items one and two. And I'm understanding Mr. Mayor to say there was another one that came out that is different. And if that's correct, can you guys give me the timestamp of when that email went out and I'll pull up that document?
And I can, I can screen, you want me to screen share that?
Yes, please.
And Ashley, can you, can you tell us the timestamp too?
Oh, yes, when the email went out?
Yes.
Oh, let's see.
And 10, 10 o'clock.
Okay, well, that's the same one that we're, we're both, I think. I'm sorry, this is Councilwoman Miniano. I didn't mean to interrupt, Mayor.
No problem. So, um, Councilman Bowles, it came out today at 10 o'clock.
I found it, thank you. It just strikes the word must and just doesn't replace it with anything.
The, no, what, what changes is the second item in, in the ordinance before us was not in the first at all. So the recommendation that businesses adopt the policy of requiring masks was not included in that previous one. Instead, in the previous one, the, the draft that was more closely followed, the city of Charleston, the town is solely responsible for requiring mask use and businesses were not asked to have any policy on that at all. So this number two in the draft before us was not in the first draft at all. So changing the second part, part two of the draft before us would, to make that must would be a change, but it would not be returning to a, something more similar to what the city had proposed. The city's number two is really more similar to number three, which retains a must in this document. So what is two before us is new language. And then I think Councilman Milliken's amendment is, you know, in order for both, but what he said about number one is correct. Number one basically changes must to recommend, recommends for the town requiring individual citizens to wear masks within businesses. Number two, in the draft before us, recommending that businesses adopt a policy requiring masks of their customers was not in the previous document, the previous draft that I sent out. And then number three is the same as the previous draft that didn't change. But do you understand that? So anyway, Councilman Milliken has proposed changing one and two from recommends to must, basically. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And it's been seconded and so now we're discussing that change. Any other discussion?
Um, this is Councilwoman Miniano, uh, not discussing, not so much the, the must part, but like, what about like an expiration date on this?
So this draft before us, what we, what we're discussing now will expire after our next town council meeting. So our, on July 16th, I believe.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. So it'll, it'll expire then. And so at that next council meeting, we would either have to extend it for some particular time or if we did nothing, then it would disappear. Or we could amend it at that time.
Thank you. I, I'm so sorry. I have one other question. Again, Councilwoman Miniano. So how, how would we enforce this exactly?
Well, so the way the language is written, it would be enforced by our code enforcement officer. And the reason why I do not support making this requirement on individual citizens is there is no practical way for a code enforcement officer to enforce this. And so if we consider how this would work, um, at least in number one, section one, what would happen is, you know, some citizen would notice people are not wearing masks at some restaurant or bar at night, call town hall at that time when they wouldn't get an answer. And then the next day they could call or we would get their phone message and then, and then in theory, our code enforcement officer is supposed to find the individual citizen who didn't have a mask. And that seems to me highly impractical. And Sheriff Tannen has said that the sheriff's deputies would not enforce this for us. So we will not have our normal law enforcement to enforce a face mask requirement in the town. And that would not be possible. And I don't, and you know, if you think about our one code enforcement officer, this would be a tremendous burden to ask them to enforce a face mask ordinance on individual citizens. And that's what that language suggests. So that is why I would oppose this amendment. As for the second part, I think it's premature at this time to require businesses to, to adopt a policy of, you know, no mask, no service at this time. I think we need to explore that a bit more. Concerns have been raised that, that this is inappropriate. And so I think we should look, pursue it more. And then in our next meeting, if that, if we, we find that the businesses on the Town of James Island have not followed a recommendation and they are not, they do not, have not adopted this policy on their own and, and that having us require them to have this policy is legally sound, then we can go that step forward and make that a requirement that businesses in the town adopt a policy of no service without a face mask. So I would recommend, I would, I would not support Councilman Milliken's amendments. I think that recommendation for, as, as applies to individual citizens is the right approach. At this time, I think recommendations to businesses as a policy is sensible. You know, what, what this ordinance, the current version would require is that businesses have their employees that are in contact with the public wear face masks. And that I believe is enforceable. And this would involve our code enforcement officer would enforce it. And if businesses did not comply, that if we find out that they're not complying, we would visit the businesses and, and require that they comply. It would not involve our code enforcement officer trying to hunt down individual citizens or cite citizens in a store or, or something like that, which is really not something our code enforcement officer or any code enforcement officer is really trained to do. So I, I'm speaking against the amendment. Any further discussion?
This is Bowles speaking. I would point out that the expiration date being as quickly as it is July 17th, as Mr. Mayor pointed out, I would kind of argue the other side of the coin. I don't see the harm in putting this out there for everyone to follow until the 17th. And then we look at the public input between now and the 17th. And if a lot of people are against it, that we can, we can roll it back at that time. When looking at the whole, to me, the whole purpose behind this is a public safety measure. And I don't see any point in, in halfway implementing a public safety measure. I think we do it all or nothing. I've got two little kids. I know there's a lot of other people out there who have children. I got a lot of emails on both sides, probably more for the face mask requirement than against, especially from business owners emailing me that they were in favor of having a mask requirement. So I would say the amendment's a good idea. I would say that the quick expiration is going to allow plenty of public input for the next meeting and no one's really asking the code enforcement officer to go out there and enforce this. I think enforcement isn't really the issue. It's more about taking a stand in favor of err on the side of caution. And so I would point out that to err on the side of caution would mean that we just require face coverings for now. And let's see what happens between now and the July meeting. And that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes, this is Councilman Milliken. I couldn't agree with Councilman Bowles more. If anybody noticed, we are in an exponential increase right now. We're nowhere near to flattening any type of a curve. We're only increasing our number of cases. As you increase the number of cases, you increase the risk of more cases. So that's the point of it being exponential. A lot of people are going to die from this disease unless we start changing our behavior. And the first type of behavior that has to change is one, social isolation and two, a mask when you're forced to go out in public. The point is a mask is the only form of source control because it blocks respiratory droplets from traveling to other people when the mask wearer sneezes, coughs, or talks. This is a fact. Respiratory droplets spread the virus. And if they can be contained, so can the virus. For anyone who's questioning the effectiveness of masks and stemming the spread of COVID-19, here is a list of 16 peer-reviewed research studies that have been published in journals ranging from the New England Journal of Medicine to the Journal of Infectious Disease to Science. And each of these sources have found that masks diminish the spread of the virus. These sources are available through the Centers for Disease Control website. This is what we need to be doing. This is how we can reverse the trend. And if we can get our businesses and public spaces on board with masks, we have a better chance of flattening the curve. Until then, we're not going to do it.
So the ordinance before us unamended recommends that people do wear masks and that businesses adopt a policy of requiring masks. Councilman Bowles thinks that this has nothing to do with enforcement, but of course this ordinance does include penalties. The whole point of being an ordinance, changing it from recommends to requires is to put criminal penalties or civil penalties on failure to wear a mask. That's what is before us. And when we say that the town cannot possibly enforce it, that we're not just going to recommend, we're going to require this mask. And if people don't do it, they're going to be subject to criminal penalties. And then we say, well, we're not going to actually enforce it. It really makes the ordinance a joke. And I don't think it is desirable to pass ordinance that are jokes. I am not arguing that masks are not wise to wear or do not help reduce the risk of spreading the disease. I think it's a wise thing to do. But I think that making an unenforceable requirement on individuals that we cannot enforce is not appropriate. I also think it is premature to require businesses to have a policy of requiring masks. It is premature at this, that we need to do some further study on that approach. So that second paragraph that includes right now a recommendation that businesses require masks is not something that's been adopted by the city of Charleston. So, you know, the city of Charleston says that businesses, it's in, whether, whether people wear masks in businesses or not, is not a decision of the businesses, has nothing to do with it, that the city itself would go in and enforce it. That's the approach they've taken. And I think that recommending that businesses adopt a requirement that people wear masks is a sensible approach at this time. And that we're not waiting three weeks to decide what, in my opinion, to decide whether people like masks or not. It's rather, we're waiting three weeks or, or some period of time to do further research into this approach of whether it's appropriate to require businesses to adopt this policy. If businesses adopt this policy, then people who do not comply can be required to leave by law enforcement. If we, if we just simply adopt a policy that says everyone has to wear a mask in the businesses, it's, it's not up to business. The businesses aren't requiring the people to wear a mask in their business. It's only the town requires them. Then our law enforcement, the Island Sheriff's Patrol and the Sheriff's Department will not enforce it. And our code enforcement officer, I do not think it is wise or practical to have them enforce it. And I do think we're talking about enforcement, not just, you know, if we say we must do it and it's required, that that's, you know, just makes it more serious as opposed to a recommendation. When we say you must do it, that says it's a criminal, there's a penalty and it actually, it's a civil penalty in this case. That we're imposing a fine, that we will give citations to people, we will take them to the magistrate's court and make them pay fines because they're not wearing face masks. That is what the amendment is proposing. And I, the, and in fact, businesses who do not have their employees require wear masks, they will be obligated to wear masks as well. So in any case, any further discussion?
Um, yes.
Yeah.
Councilman Miniano.
Yes, this is Councilwoman Miniano.
Councilwoman Miniano, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Whatever. I, we're totally good. Um, so I guess I'm trying to figure out the most prudent way for us to protect our citizens. I, I do not think that having this unenforceable ordinance is effective. I think that, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, and, and Councilman Bowles and Councilwoman Milliken, please, please chime in. If we approached it from the business side, where we said businesses had to wear masks and employees had to wear masks, and then the businesses could say, we want our customers, clients, patients, et cetera, et cetera, to wear masks when they enter, then that would be an enforceable thing. And then this would be something we could do. I'm not saying that, that we do not have like defenses here. I totally agree that we do. I'm just trying to figure out the best way for us to do this because we only have one code enforcement officer. Like he can't go to a bar at nine o'clock at night. This man, there's one, one guy. So I, I think that we should, I'm, I'm leaning towards, or I think that we should really consider having the businesses require that their employees wear masks. And that we strongly recommend that the businesses require that those people coming in wear masks. That's something that we can actually stand behind and enforce. That's something that we can actually stand behind and enforce. And, and I would welcome any discussion on that.
Yeah, this, so this is Bowles responding to the enforcement aspect of it. Maybe I didn't communicate this properly. I understand we only have one code enforcement officer right now for some twelve to thirteen thousand residents and however many businesses that are on the island. You know, the state of North Carolina, the entire state just passed a law that, or maybe not a law. They, the governor signed an order that the entire state, anyone in the state is supposed to wear a mask when in public. That is not enforce, I mean, you can't enforce 100% of that, but they're going to catch some people. It's just a proactive step, right? And something that Mr. Mayor said about, we'll wait three weeks to decide if people like face masks. Nobody likes face masks. Face masks are the worst. You smell your own breath the whole time you're reading, you're wearing them. I've got my consumption of Altoids has gone through the roof since I've started wearing face masks all the time. It's just a little, it's a really little thing, like smelling your own breath for a little while and like putting it on when you go into a place is really small. It's not, we're not asking people to carry a heavy load or put rocks in their pockets or get sweaty or really do anything hard at all. Just put a stupid thing on your face and when you run in and out of a store, you know, just knock it out. And so when you, you know, as a lawyer, we always look at the scales. And when you put the benefit and the burden on opposite ends of the scale, the burden on the average person, when they go out to a James Island business, which there are some, but there's not a ton of them. Most of the grocery stores are all in the city. So you're going to have to wear a mask when you go into a grocery store anyway, no matter what we decide here today. But for our local businesses, for folks to go there for the next three weeks to just put something over their face when they go in and out is so small of a gesture when countered against the potential benefit, whether you believe masks work or not, even if you don't believe in them. It's just a really small thing that you can do for people that do believe in them. And again, if you want to look at the enforceability argument, the whole state of North Carolina has required it. Now, they're, they're not going to have police officers on mask patrol everywhere in North Carolina, but it's just something they've decided is in the interest of public health. And that's all this is, is a public health. This is not a political statement. And this is not about personal beliefs by any stretch of the imagination. It's just a really little thing everybody can do that's supposed to help. And so I, I don't think it's asking for a lot for now till July. And then from July, we see what we want to do until August. And we don't have to pass anything any longer than from one meeting to the other. I do, I am sympathetic to the argument that you should leave. Private businesses should be able to decide what they want. And by and large, they should. And the market should decide if someone wants to go to a place that requires masks or not. Just let them vote with their money. And generally, I think that that is a logic. But what we're talking about is, is passed by people breeding to each other. And, and everybody wants to get out. It's summer. I've been working from home since March. I came out for two weeks and it's driving us all crazy to be here. I would love for nothing more than to be able to get out. So when I do go out, I just put the stupid mask on for a minute. And that, that's what lets me get out of the house safely. And it lets me come home without worrying about bringing anything back home. So I think it's sound to go ahead and pass this now. Let's see what happens between now and July seventeen. And, and again, on a balance of the benefit and burden, it's such a, the, the burden is so light compared to the possible benefit that I think we should just go ahead and muscle through this now. And let's see what happens between now and July seventeen. Not, thank you. That's all.
So I would like briefly respond, this is Mayor Woolsey to Councilman Bowles. I did not suggest that for the next three weeks, people should decide whether they like masks or not. I rather said that we should take this three weeks to decide whether it is legal for us to require businesses to have a policy of requiring masks. The amendment that Councilman Milliken has proposed and that you're advocating would impose that policy. It would require all businesses to have a policy that would impose masks. That is what you proposed. I have, we need to review whether that is a legal approach. Most municipalities in South Carolina have not adopted that approach. It is, would be unique to us. And I think that trying this for three weeks without having a careful review, legal review, and working with other municipalities to consider this approach is unwise. Now, I think that, you know, again, the difference between recommending people wear masks and saying people must wear masks by legal penalty is not about whether it's a small burden or a large burden. It's about whether we are going to punish people and force people to wear masks. And when we say it's unenforceable, it's, the fact is when people who are concerned that others aren't wearing masks, when they call the town and say, well, you passed an ordinance, what are you doing about it? Our answer will have to be, there's nothing we can do about it. It wasn't really an ordinance. It wasn't really required. We said it was must, but that was just a fraud. In reality, it was just a recommendation. We're hoping people wear masks because we think it's really important. And I believe that that is a mistake. And so I believe that the wise approach now is to recommend that people wear masks for the reasons Councilman Bowles described. That we recommend that businesses adopt a policy of, of requiring masks for people who come into their businesses. And we see if businesses actually adopt such a policy. Maybe they all will, in which case there won't be any need for requiring them to do so. Maybe they won't. Maybe there's good reasons for them not. But then we can consider in three weeks whether to impose that as a requirement. And so that's what the three weeks is about, is not to determine whether we like wearing masks or masks are good or bad, is whether it is wise to, or, or necessary to require businesses to adopt that policy. And so I would agree with Councilwoman Magnano that the best approach is to require businesses to have their employees wear masks, to recommend strongly that they adopt a policy of requiring their customers to wear masks, to recommend that people wear masks when they go into businesses, when they go into stores and shops and so on, when they go inside, when they leave the house. And so I would speak against this amendment. I think we should vote down this amendment and go back to the main document.
This is Councilman Milliken. I'm sorry to perseverate the issue, but I think that business owners, based on what Councilman Bowles said, I think it's important to recognize that, I think to a large extent, people want to feel safe when they go to a business. They don't want to go to a business and run the risk of picking up this virus. And I think that it's in the business owner's best interest to do their own sort of enforcement. No shirt, no shoes, no service, no shirt, no shoes, no mask, no service. All right? This is something that enforcement could take place by the individual business owner. They could have some masks on hand to help people. There's a lot of ways to go about this, but I think it pushes the importance of this virus. It pushes the importance of masks in stopping the virus. This is a fact, not a belief, all right? That masks reduce the likelihood of the virus. It's a fact. And I think that we need to consider the facts when we consider how many people are acquiring this virus right now.
So in response, this is Mayor Woolsey again, in response to Councilman Milliken. I think that perhaps it is wise for businesses to adopt a policy. That is why I suggested that we make that recommendation. Your amendment would not make it a recommendation that businesses adopt this policy. It would require that all businesses would adopt this policy. And this would be a unique policy of the town, that the town requiring all businesses to adopt this policy. I would like, we need to do further research on this approach. And I think for the next, not necessarily, we don't necessarily have to wait three weeks. Could have another meeting to make it required. But we can see how many businesses voluntarily adopt this policy. And we can look into the legality of us mandating this policy rather than do it at this time. There's a reason why this proposal came as a recommendation in this document and not as a mandate at this time. I do not, I don't think it is wise for us to try to be the first and only municipality that creates that mandate.
This is Councilwoman Magnano. I'm so sorry, Dan.
It's okay.
So what did the city say? But like, let's look at city of Charleston. What, what was their recommendation? And forgive me, because I know you put it out there. If you could just recap that, like, did they say that it was a requirement or was it a recommendation?
So Councilwoman Magnano, this city requires individuals entering businesses to wear a mask. It's a requirement. And the city code enforcement, their livability officers have been delegated to enforce that against the individuals that enter the business. They have also required that business employees, that businesses require their employees to wear masks. They say nothing about businesses having policies requiring masks. And in fact, specifically say that businesses have no responsibility for enforcing mask wear at all. So this is, you know, so if we were to require that businesses have a policy of requiring masks, this would be different than what the city of Charleston requires or the other municipalities. So it's, it's a different policy. And I would not, I do not think that we should jump into that. Now, if we were to require all citizens to wear masks, that would be similar to what the citizens, all citizens wear masks when they go into businesses. That would be consistent with what the city requires. My concern with that is a, a matter of enforceability, that we're, it, we're just being a paper tiger. You know, we can say, we, you know, it's very serious. We, we take it serious. We, we're going to make a symbolic statement and say it's a law that you must wear masks. But really, you, you know, there's nothing, you don't have to. We won't make you do it. If you don't, you just can defy it and nothing will happen to you. That is, and I think that's a mistake. I think that if we're going to, and, and I also think that the state of North Carolina has sheriffs, sheriff's deputies, municipal police forces, state patrol. They have all sorts of law enforcement that I believe will be enforcing the government's face mask order. Thousands and thousands of them. They're not expecting, well, thousands, they're not expecting their code enforcement, the people that are responsible for derelict cars and overgrown grass, to go to individual citizens and demand that they, you know, that they wear masks. And I, I think that that's what the city of Charleston has chosen to do because their chief of police does not want to be involved in enforcing this. The sheriff, who does law enforcement in the town, will not be involved in enforcing it. They do have more code enforcement agents in the city of Charleston. There are, of course, many more people than we do and many more, many more people than we do. But I think it is unreasonable to make this a mandate. So anyway, is there more discussion?
One last thing and then I'm done. I was just in North Car, this is Councilwoman Magnano. I was just in North Carolina. I was in Asheville. People were wearing masks and then they weren't, and then they were. I saw no enforcement of that. I saw lots of signs to do that. I, I find it a little difficult to figure out how we would actually enforce this. I, I, I most certainly am very concerned about COVID-19. Please do not misunderstand me. I am very concerned about this. I definitely want to stop the, the uptick on the virus. But I, I think that we should stick with the original ordinance that was presented. And that's the end of my statement. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Yes.
Yeah, real quick, this is Bowles chiming in again. I'm looking at the coverage of the city. Or they heard, they had a doctor weigh in at their meeting who pointed out Dr. Ball Jr., indoor mask wearing and limiting the size of crowds, particularly in bars, which is most of what I am aware that James Island's businesses are on Folly Road. I mean, Dr. Magnano's got a business there. And last I was by there, they didn't have an open bar at the chiropractic office. But everybody else on Folly Road and around the town are mostly bars. You know, and I would point out that our, even with the amendment requirement, what we're talking about here is far less restrictive than what the city put out. The city actually requires people walking down the sidewalk to put a mask on. We're not asking that. You can walk around your neighborhood. You can walk down the sidewalk. You don't have to wear a mask just whenever you go in. Sorry, I got a fruit fly or something here killing me. It's pretty, the, the, the amount of onus we're putting on the public and on business owners is really quite low compared to what other municipalities, this, in particular, the city have passed. And so again, you just put everything on a scale. It's a really light burden, if any burden at all, to put this out there. So that's all I'm going to say about that. Thank you for hearing me.
All right. So is there any further discussion? Hearing none. So we're now going to vote on the amendment to make, to change that the town recommends that individuals wear masks when going into retail businesses and restaurants to requiring that individuals wear masks. And that also change from recommending that businesses adopt the policy of requiring masks in their business to a requirement that all, that businesses acquire a mask. So would you?
Mayor, I'm, but I'm so sorry. Could you, could you repeat that one last time?
So what we're proposing with this amendment, what we're voting on now would change recommendation to requirements so that we would require that people wear masks and provide, impose a civil penalty on that if they go into businesses, if individuals go into businesses. And then also require that all businesses have a policy of requiring their customers to have masks. That's the amendment, Councilman Milliken's amendment. So to vote yes is to make, to impose requirements. And to vote no keeps recommendation, the document that we had to start with. So all in favor of saying, of, in favor? Well, we need to call the roll. So would the town clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Bowles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Magnano?
No.
Councilman Milliken?
Yes.
Mayor Woolsey?
No. So that fails. So we're back to the amendment or the ordinance as proposed. Any further discussion?
I have, I have one last statement. I know that this is an emergency meeting and this is not our normal time. I, I would just like to say, I think that it would be in our best entrance, in, interest to go with the recommendation first and see how that works. And then if it does not, then we can go harder if we need to. It's only three weeks. And that's, that, that's the end of my comment.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's go ahead and bring this to a vote. Would the town clerk please call the roll?
Councilman Bowles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Magnano?
Yes.
Councilman Milliken?
Yes.
Mayor Woolsey?
Yes. So that passes. There being no further business in this meeting, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.